Good evening. The regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Spring Independent School District is officially called to order on Thursday, November 10th, 2022, and the time is now 7:05 PM. Board of Trustees present our trustee Adams, trustee Correa, trustee Hodges, trustee Durant, trustee Jensen, trustee Newhouse, and trustee McDaniels. I'd like to ask everyone to turn off and silence their cell phones or electronic devices. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask trustee Adams to begin the meeting by reading the Spring ISD equity statement.
Thank you, Madam President. Spring Independent School District strongly believes in educational and racial equity as fundamental aspects of its core mission and purpose, embodied through any program, practice, decision, or action that affects all students with a strategic focus on those choices and policies that most strongly impact marginalized students. We believe all students, regardless of their ability, cognitive, physical, or socio-emotional, ethnicity, language, race, religion, gender identity, and status should have equitable access to opportunities, resources, support systems, and educational rigor in order to maximize their academic success and social emotional well-being. We believe every Spring Independent School District student is valuable and possesses individual strengths and characteristics that make our district a great place to learn and grow. Moreover, we seek to act on that belief, instituting policies and practices that value diversity, committing ourselves as a district to continued growth and development and working to support the success of every student in all that we do.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Tonight's presentation of colors will be led by the Decane Naval JROTC. The pledges will be led by Cadet Petty Officer First Class Savannah Ellis. The color guard commander carrying the US flag is Cadet Commander Andrea Vergiero. Carrying the Texas flag is Cadet Petty Officer First Class Daisy Akora. Left rifle is Cadet Lieutenant Ruth Delgado. Right rifle is Cadet Lieutenant Vivian Hernandez. The Decane Wildcat Navy JROTC Battalion is led by Chief Victor Adams and Chief Robert Dunn. At this time, I'd like to ask everyone if you would please rise. Left, face, forward, march. At this time, I ask that those present please quietly observe a moment of silence in your own way. Thank you. You may be seated. Our first item on tonight's agenda is our superintendent remarks. So we will now hear from our super proud superintendent, Dr. Lapita Inahosa.
Thank you, Ms. Durant. So, members of the board, our families, our parents, our guests, and students that are here tonight, and those of you that are online with us this evening, I think that we can all agree that the most exciting update this evening is the success of our bond 2022. Yes, and so many of you were with us on Tuesday night after the polls closed and, you know, we were waiting anxiously for the results and they were looking very promising. And while we were very excited, we were also a bit nervous and had the opportunity to finally go to bed, go to sleep, get a little bit of rest until the morning when everyone was checking their phones, right? And finally, early in the wee hours of the morning, Wednesday morning, we got the results that all three propositions of our bond 2022 passed. And so, yes. And I'd like to say, I know these are my remarks, and I know everyone here will echo in saying that, you know, we are, we're so grateful to our parents, to our community, to the students, to everyone that got out there to vote. We know that we are in, you know, on the cusp of continuing the greatness here in Spring ISD. And this bond definitely is part of the impetus that will take for us to ensure the success of our students. And this is only because of the work of the staff, of the parents, of the community, of everyone coming together to support this bond, to get the word out of exactly what was part of our proposition, and, you know, getting the facts out. Because oftentimes during a bond election, people don't have the facts, and it took everyone. And what's most important about this bond, and I think you've heard us say it, you've heard me say it, our president say it, that this bond was created by our community for our community. The bond steering committee made up of parents, of community members, of principals, teachers, and students came up with the proposal of what Spring ISD needed. And then, of course, that proposal coming to this board and this board unanimously approving it back in August. And that meant everyone rolling up their sleeves to get the word out. And it's been, I have to say, a complete team effort. A complete team effort of ensuring that we continue the work. Because each one of us, number one, and first and foremost, believe in our students and believe in Spring. I also have to say that a lot of the work done was also at the school level. Our teachers, our principals, holding those PTO meetings, holding the cup of coffee with the principal, those meetings to be able to talk to our parents, to talk to the community. And I have to say, we have an amazing communications team helping us get the word out, whether it was, yes, right, whether it was through social media, whether it was all those meetings that we had at the middle schools. We even had a Facebook Live event. That was the first time that we've done something like that, and we had lots of views, lots of great feedback. And so, special thanks to our communications team for carrying this work forward and most importantly, informing our community of this bond. And, I have to say, we have some very courageous volunteers that specifically ran for the board to serve our community and to serve our students. So, a very special heartfelt thanks to our board, our Board of Education that has supported us and has seen the vision and your work, tirelessly work out there, getting the word out, and most importantly, supporting our students. So, we are, yes. We're so very fortunate in Spring to have a board that supports our vision. And when we say "we believe in Spring," we believe in Spring. We believe in Spring, right? We each and every one of us believe in Spring. And so, just thank you to everyone out there. Mil gracias a todos que nos están viendo, a los padres que están aquí, que nos apoyaron en nuestros bonos. Estos bonos, este dinero, es para mejorar nuestro distrito. Es algo que es necesario para seguir mejorando la educación de los niños. Entonces, mil gracias a todos ustedes que están aquí con nosotros hoy, a los que están por el video, verdad? Mil gracias de parte de nuestros niños, de los maestros y del distrito. So, now, just some quick reminders so no one forgets. We are participating in our annual toy drive. And this is in partnership with Northwest Assistance Ministry, or what we know as NAM. And so, the toy drive is going on right now. Last year, we collected 1,300 toys and we expect to exceed that. The toys will come right back to our children here in Spring. And so, we ask everyone to bring a new unwrapped toy over to any one of our schools, any one of our dropout, drop-off location, because we want to make sure that all children ages zero through 18 years old have the opportunity to receive some toys. So, these donations, like I said, are being taken at all of our schools and any of our Spring ISD location. So, the toy drive is going on right now. And since we're talking about toys, here in Spring ISD, we have an amazing, great tradition, and that's our Winter Wonderland. So, mark your calendars. Winter Wonderland is Friday, December 2nd. Friday, December 2nd. It will be hosted once again at Planet Ford. Last year was the first year there. If you were there, it was amazing. We took over the entire field. And so, once again, we'll be out there. And for our students that are watching, for the children that are watching, we will have snow again. So, get ready. Bring your mittens, because you'll get to play in the snow. And so, mark your calendars. This is a good time for us as a community to come together. Come together, have some fun, and enjoy. Our focus with Winter Wonderland is always the joy or the love of literacy. So, come out. And, you know, we're right around the corner for Thanksgiving. And so, just want to, once again, express our gratitude, our, you know, thanks to all of our students, our teachers, our families, everyone that's out there to have a wonderful Thanksgiving break. We are very grateful for your support, your continued commitment to our district. And we hope, I hope, that this upcoming holiday will be a time for everyone to have the opportunity to rest and renew and, you know, to get charged up for the spirit of the celebrations that are coming right around the corner. And so, we want to continue to work on behalf of our students throughout this holiday season and into the new year. It is a great time to look back, reflect, and be grateful for all that we have here in Spring ISD. So, once again, thank you so much for your continued support. Thank you, Ms. Durant.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. I am still on cloud nine after having received the news that Spring ISD voters approved all three of our bond propositions. My fellow board members and I had a busy but exhausting day at the polls on Tuesday, sharing information with the community and having conversations with Spring ISD voters as they approached the polls. As a board, it's so important to us that we represent every student and teacher in this district every day. We don't serve particular neighborhoods or communities. We serve Spring ISD as one. And this board does just that. It provides a helping hand to all of our students on every single campus. The bond proposal provides equitable upgrades to every single campus in our district. The proposals in this bond will help all students in Spring ISD at every single grade level. I would like to thank a few people who worked behind the scenes of this bond. Our bond steering committee worked all summer to create an equitable, innovative, and forward-looking proposal that sets up Spring ISD for success. So, if there are any of our bond steering committee members here this evening, would you please stand and be recognized? Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication and your support of our students. We saw their hard work, both as members of that committee and as board members when the proposal was presented to us back in August. I can say with full confidence that this is the bond proposal that Spring ISD needs right now, and our community clearly agreed. Thank you so much for your persistence and your commitment. Thank you to our principals for all of their hard work in amplifying the message to their individual communities. Do we have any of our principals here this evening? Can you all please stand? And of course, I'd like to give a shout out to our Spring ISD Bond Political Action Committee, who took the job of advocating for the bond and they ran with it. Those signs were on every single corner, everywhere you turned. Do we have any of our Bond Political Action Committee members here this evening? I know we still have the Townshends in the house. They were raising funds and plenty of volunteer hours to post those signs, sending out letters, and do the hard work of informing the voters of the very real needs in Spring ISD. So, I am just really so grateful. And the bond referendum is nothing without information from the district. The mission is to inform and to advocate. Getting the facts out there in a timely, nonpartisan, and easy-to-understand manner is no small undertaking. And I believe that our communications department did a fantastic job of informing Spring ISD voters. So, I'd like to ask them to stand up and be recognized as well. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my board members and Spring ISD staff for your time volunteering at the polls and working to inform our community. I can't wait to see the projects get off the ground, and I can't wait to be a part of what's to come right here in Spring ISD. So, thank you. I appreciate, I'm honored to be working with each and every one of you. We have a really strong board. We don't always agree on everything, but we always focus on the kids. And that's how we continue to move forward. Thank you guys so much. At this time, I'd like to ask if any of my other board members have any comments they'd like to make this evening.
Last month, I had the opportunity to attend the Vine Mentor-Mentee kickoff. And it was, we talked about how to spread our light. And so, it was just a great time for the students and the families and the mentors to come together. We got to meet the new mentors. And then, we have mentors who have been Vine mentors for years. And so, it was just great to come together. I'm excited to be a mentor this year. I actually meet my mentee tomorrow, so at Anderson. So, shout out to Ms. Falcon for sending that over, the opportunity. I'm really excited to do that. I just want to encourage any community members who may have a little extra time on your hands each week. Those 30 minutes to an hour can really make a huge impact in our kids' lives. And so, just take that into consideration. It was a very easy process to get signed up, because our kids need us. I'm sure most, if not all, of us have had mentors in our lives who just gave us a little extra encouragement, a little extra love. So, just want to encourage anyone to think about becoming a Vine mentor. The second one is the Grand Slam Literacy Launch Party. Yes. Is that Ms. Jackson back there? Yes. So, shout out to Ms. Jackson, the curriculum and instruction, literacy, all of the departments, the bus drivers who brought the kids there, trustee Jensen, we were there. It was an outdoor event. The kids got, and these were the kids who were the top readers. So, they had the most my on reading minutes. And so, they got to come from all of the campuses, bless you. And they, we celebrated them. There were games, face painting, free books, and different activities. And so, I just want to congratulate the kids again, because literacy is fundamental. It is going to really just take you anywhere you want to go. Literacy is the foundation. And so, even though that contest is over, just want to continue encouraging our kids to keep reading and writing and for our leaders and our teachers to keep encouraging that love of literacy. So, thank you.
So, the superintendent jumped on this super proud thing. And so, I feel kind of weird saying it, but I've been bragging about this district since I got on the board. The first thing I bragged about is I traveled around the state and met other board members from other districts was the way this team worked together. School boards are not so cohesive and collaborative across the state. And so, that's the first thing. And I'm starting to see, they say that the system benefits from the team on the school board. And so, I'm starting to see that throughout the district. And I wasn't able to be at the transportation event that happened last Friday. So, I wanted to express how sorry I was to the transportation folks and the bus drivers, because they're an important part of our system. And you just finished talking about how they get our kids to where they need to be safely. When we have issues, like we just celebrated one of the bus drivers for going above and beyond the call of duty. Our system is strengthening, and it's, you can feel it, right? And I think that's what the voters saw at the polls. Like, the parents, the people in the community feel the change that's happening, and they want to support it. So, I want to just express how super proud I am. I'm going, actually, I'm going tomorrow morning, I'm going to Knoxville to meet school board members from around the country. And I'm going to brag about what we just did, because it's not happening everywhere. Public schools have been under attack the last several years. And something feels different in Spring. And it's not just us, the system, it's this community. It feels different. And I just, I really look forward to seeing what that's going to mean for our children.
And we talk a lot about how we collaborate together, not just the team of eight that includes Dr. Inahosa, but even our senior leadership team. We all do work well together. I wanted to also give a shout out to, I don't know if Cynthia Williams is here. We had our CTE event where we inducted over, was it 200 students into the Technical National Honor Society. I think it was last week. And so, it was an amazing event. It was so exciting to see those kids receive their induction and their recognition. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we are doing great things here in Spring. Was there, oh, Debbie.
Okay. I just wanted to continue with your talking about the transportation luncheon. This has been a tradition in Spring ISD that we celebrate the employees around holiday time. And we have lovely luncheon and everything, but what I really am struck with is those bus drivers look like really fun people. I wish I could have met a whole lot more than I had the time for. And we have a new director of transportation. And if I'm pronouncing her last name correctly, it's Rio Haas. And she is taking on the reins. And the Transportation Department gave her a welcoming dinner. So, it's just talking about that culture and the cohesion, I think Transportation Department really has it.
Thank you. Our next item are recognitions. And at this time, I'd like to ask the board and Dr. Inahosa to join me in the horse shift.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board, and Dr. Inahosa. Tonight's point of pride will recognize 26 exceptional students who have been awarded and recognized through the College Board National Recognition Program. These students were awarded one or more awards that included the National Hispanic Recognition Award, the National African-American Recognition Award, and the National Indigenous Recognition Award. These students scored in the top 10% of the state on their PSAT or AP exams and have a GPA of 3.5 or higher. I invite Mr. Carlos Gonzalez, our college and career coordinator, to the podium to recognize these outstanding students.
Thank you, Dr. Inahosa. So, I do want to point out that this is an awesome occasion for you students. College Board put out a media release that only 62,000 students were awarded this nationwide. So, for us to have 26 is amazing. So, congratulations again to everybody. As I go ahead and call your name, if you want to go ahead and come on up. Spring High School, Alaya Nora, the National Hispanic Recognition Award. Diego Rosales, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Anari Solari, National African-American Recognition Award. Zenaya Wheeler, National African-American Recognition Award. Next will be Spring Early College Academy. Elena Silva, National African-American Recognition Award. Anaya Shorter Adams, National African-American Recognition Award. Burton Scott, National African-American Recognition Award. Percy Palacios, National Hispanic Recognition Award and National Indigenous Award. Darwin Candelario, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Jessica Hernandez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Moises Woods, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Devin Dugas, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Jessica Hernandez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Kristy Botley, National African-American Recognition Award and National Hispanic Recognition Award. Next will be Decane High School. Diego Chapela Perez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. And our only student from Decane. All right, Winchee High School, Allison Sanchez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Candida Herrera, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Daniel Kilanta, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Dean Ford, National African American Recognition Award. Jonathan Lazo, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Matthew Flowers, National African American Recognition Award and National Hispanic Recognition Award. Thomas Sines, National Hispanic Recognition Award. Ugona Chiri Ubani, National African American Recognition Award. Next will be Westfield High School. Michael Izulu, National African American Recognition Award. Valerie Rojas, National Hispanic Recognition Award. And Crystal Vazquez, National Hispanic Recognition Award. I would also like to invite the campus college counselors to come up as well for pictures. From Spring High School, Adrian Thomas. From Winchee High School, Dr. Sherry Mason. From Westfield High School, Dr. Clara Thompson. And our principals for the section. And our, our high school principals, I saw Ms. Gidry from Early College. And Mr. Patrick Manti, Michelle Hill. Michelle Hill has a special role. She's our counselor at Early College. She plays dual, professional school counselor and college counselor. Do you have any more high school principals? Ready for pictures? That's it, okay.
Well, on behalf of the board, I'd like to say this is a national recognition and we have twenty-six in our district alone. And that just speaks to what Trustee Adams, our vice president, talked about, that we are just soaring. And I'm so proud of you guys. We're going to take a picture. I'm going to ask if there are any parents, if any of your parents are here, can our parents please stand and be recognized?
I love you, mom.
The parents are the winners beneath our base, right? And so now I'm talking, we're going to figure out how to get us all arranged for this photo.
Yes, I think if we have the board up, up by their seats. All right. Yeah, that looks good. Okay, guys, here we go. Nice smiles right here. Hang on. All right, just a couple more. Here we go, right here on three, one, two, three. And one more on three, one, two, three. Hang on, guys, I'm going to do one more. I just like being up here, that's what. All right, here we go. On three, one, two, three. One more, one, two, three. I always say one more, but never is. All right, thank you, guys, congratulations. All right. Is this on? Yes, it is. Okay. We do. President Durant, members of the board and superintendents. As we look back, we recently celebrated several weeks ago Indigenous Peoples' Day. And as we look ahead, we're now celebrating our Native American Heritage Month through the month of November. So we're really, really, really excited. So we're really excited to celebrate three magnificent students, an elementary student, a middle grade student, and a high school student who participated in the Indigenous Peoples' Writing Contest. So without further ado, I'm going to ask Ms. Jessica Jackson and Mr. Kevin Holliday to come up and to be able to present our magnificent scholars.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Holliday and I'm the Director of Instructional Technology. And I have with me today, one of my amazing teammates, and I will let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Jessica Jackson. I'm District Instructional Technology Specialist.
And we are two of three of the instructional technology team. And we are super excited to be able to spotlight three of our students for their amazing work. So today, this particular team had the privilege of being a part of our Indigenous Peoples' Writing Contest. And Ms. Jackson was our district contact and our district lead for this particular contest. So she is going to provide for you more acknowledgements as well as contest details. And she's going to showcase our winners. So I'm going to silence my voice and allow her to take over.
Well, before we present these magnificent winners, I'd like to take a moment to thank our parents and our staff, our administrators, our library media specialists, and all the support, all the people that came together to support our students. So let's just give them a hand clap really quick. And when I think about the magnitude of what these students did, they took the time to write important facts that honor Indigenous Peoples' culture and identity, and that's magnificent. And when I think about that, I want to recognize some other people, our board. I want to thank you for your stance and your commitment on equity and your commitment in celebrating all the cultural diversity here in Spring ISD. So let's give them a hand clap. Thank you, guys. All right, without further ado, I would like to present to you our three 2022 Indigenous People Contest winners. And I'm going to say all of their names first and their schools. And then we're going to have them stand with their support. And we're going to give them a round of applause at the end. So first, we're going to have Genesis Mayo, and she attends Benneke Elementary School. And that is our winner. We'll have them stand. And then our middle school winner is Carlo Carrada for Plotten Middle School. They can stand. Oh, you guys. And then our high school winner is Pablo Calderon, and he is from Winchee. You guys want to come back here?
Yes.
Congratulations. Let's give them another hand clap.
Another photo. Winchee representing. Okay, you're representing Winchee.
And while we're recognizing the students, their parents here, where their parents please stand and be recognized.
Here we go, right here. Very nice on three, one, two, three. Hang on. One more, here we go. On three, one, two, three. All right, guys, congratulations. So as we talk about equity and diversity and inclusion in the district and providing opportunities for students to celebrate their culture. And I just think that's a really good example of the opportunities that we're providing for students, every student. And so I, I want to thank you, Dr. Inahosa, and your team and the administrators that are making sure that our kids have access to these opportunities.
Thank you, Trustee Adams, and thank you. We will now continue with tonight's agenda. Our next item is agenda participation. This item allows members of the public an opportunity to speak on agenda items before those items are considered by the board. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone registered to speak under agenda participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. Our next item is public participation. Mr. Binkley, do we have anyone signed up or registered to speak under public participation?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. For our next item, I'd like to again recognize, for our next item, I'd like to recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Ann Westbrook.
Good evening, thank you, President Durant, Dr. Hina Hosa, and members of the board. This evening, we have the financial report and the audit report for the district's fiscal year ended June thirtieth of 2022. And as you all know, we're required by law to have an external audit of the district's financial operations each year. And so this evening, I'd like to call up Ms. Selena Settez Setters, who is a partner with the Whitley Penn Audit Firm. And she's going to present the board the audit results for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth, 2022.
Good evening, President Durant, members of the board and Dr. Inahosa. As Ms. Westbrook indicated, we are here to review the results of the 2022, both the financial statement and single audits. There's, with the influx of ESSER funding, we were very busy and your team has been very busy trying to juggle, well, especially when we were here, trying to juggle their normal duties on top of meeting our audit requests. So I do want to thank your management team for putting aside their normal duties to assist us getting through, through the audit. So I appreciate them very much. The purpose of the financial statements and the roles, let me start with the responsibility and the roles of each entity here. And I'm an entity as well as the board, as well as management. But management is required to design and implement internal controls. And you as a board are required to have the key players and the right, right individuals in the management team to make sure that they execute those internal controls. And then as independent auditors, we need to issue that opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements. We want to make sure that we provide reasonable assurance. We cannot provide absolute assurance because that would require a hundred percent testing. And we also know that there's human error. Even management itself cannot provide absolute assurance. So our audit is reasonable assurance, saying that any entity or individual, excuse me, or rating agency or regulator can take your financial statements and rely on them because we've done sufficient audit work so that you can rely on our opinion and the figures presented therein. I do want to say that our audit is not an, an assessment of your economic well-being. I'm not saying there's anything wrong, but our audit is simply saying the numbers are accurate. Be, be what they may, but they can be relied on. So I just want to make sure that that's clear as, as well. So our audit process started, and the reason I'm, this is a little different from previous years is because we have Statement on Auditing Standard Number 134. And it was, we were required to explain that to board members, those charged with governance and management, what the different roles as management auditors and, and the board had in conducting our audit and what does the actual financial statement audit mean. We started in the spring with our planning and risk assessment. Moved into early summer, we gained an understanding of your internal controls, meeting with just not the individuals from finance, but also information technology, all the federal programs, the tax office, met with the PMS Coordinator. And we identified the key controls, tested those controls, all in an effort to design our audit procedures so that when the district closed its books, we could determine what substantive testing would we perform. And substantive testing includes corroborating, confirming, and vouching financial transactions that are presented within or accumulated and then end up in your financial statements, as Ms. Westbrook's indicated. And she'll go over that here, here in a bit. All of these procedures are so that we can issue an opinion on the financial statements. And every entity has one of three opportunities or, or can receive one type of opinion. No one wants in a qualification or a disclaimer. So I'm pleased to, to report that Spring ISD has earned an unmodified or clean opinion. And you'll notice that I said earned because it is a task. And although you've received an unmodified or clean opinion year after year, it's not easy to get here. I mentioned earlier that with the influx of ESSER funds, it's increasingly difficult to manage all of the requirements state on top of the, the ever-changing requirements, on top of state aid struggles, average daily attendance, and all the nuances with, with state aid as well. Because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funds, we're required to add an additional layer of auditing standards under generally accepted governing auditing standards as well. Because we use those government auditing standards, we're required to issue another report over internal controls or financial reporting, and then also over your compliance. So not just federal compliance, but also state of Texas specific compliance that are direct and material to your financial statements. And that includes procurement, Public Funds Investment Act, as well as with your state allotment spending as well. Pleased to report again, we don't have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report or any instances of non-compliance. This year, you spent $95.1 million solely in federal funds. And of those, we tested Title I Part A, Title II Part A, ESSER II and III, an emergency connectivity fund. Again, it was a very busy year for us and your team. Again, it was a very busy year for us and your team to provide us with all the supporting documentation that we had. You will see ESSER 2 and 3 audited probably next year, and maybe even perhaps in fiscal year '24, just because the Office of Management and Budget has indicated that the ESSER funds cannot be considered, or they are considered of higher risk. So if the spending levels continue, we'll be hard-pressed not to audit them each fiscal year. Emergency Connectivity Fund was a new program, and that was also deemed of higher risk, and we had to test that in the current year. Our required communications around significant risk that we have to identify and bring to your attention. This is a result of that auditing standard that I mentioned earlier. Every entity has a significant risk of either management override and revenue recognition. And so we do perform procedures to ensure that we have an opportunity to identify those areas of risk or area. Let me backtrack. For these risks, we've performed procedures to ensure that that hasn't occurred. One of the ways that we do that with revenue is that the Texas Education Agency provides the TEA payment report as well as the payment ledger. So we're able to substantiate the bulk of it. Because you collect your own taxes, we do have to do a pretty in-depth test of control on the cash receipt side. And we also test adjustments and refunds in additions to the cash receipts for the amounts levied to the individual taxpayers. So that is how we gain comfort on the revenue side. I mentioned earlier the test of controls, that's required as well, so that we can gain comfort and rely on those controls and design our audit procedures. Significant accounting policies changed this year for governments across the United States. The implementation of GASB number 97 or leases was required. That simply indicates that if you had entered into lease agreements before, it was simply a note disclosure if it was an operating lease. But there was still a non-cancelable commitment where entities were required to fulfill or they're part of that agreement. And so now this standard says, go ahead and report the liability on your financial statements along with this right-to-use or intangible asset for the use of that equipment building, et cetera. There are estimates included in your financial statements, and that includes three large items. So the net pension and net OPEB liabilities, we've discussed for probably the last five years. And this year, you'll see that the net pension liability decreased by more than half, a little bit more than half. And that's because the investment earnings were very favorable. Now, you might say, no, they weren't. That's not what we are hearing. But the measurement year on which these were calculated is always a year behind. So the measurement year for these pension liabilities were from September 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021. You'll probably see something different this time next year with that pension liability. Final comment on those is that remember that it is not a cash liability. You do not have to write a check for those. But again, we're required to audit it and make sure that your management team reports it on the financial statement based on the proportionate share determined by TRS. State aid, of course, there's always that inverse relationship between property taxes and average daily attendance and state aid. So the more property taxes you collect, you'll see the reverse happening on state aid. However, average daily attendance is critical. So that's the other reason that we do test attendance as well, and then confirm the results of what your management team is reporting as state aid revenue with the TEA summary of finances and the payment ledgers. We didn't have any disagreements with management or encounter any difficulties. There were no uncorrected misstatements that we had to report to management or you tonight here. The last piece of audit evidence that we received was the representation letter. Management has asserted that they have not withheld any information from us to conduct our audit, and they have given us all supporting documentation as well. If there's times where management teams may disagree with the auditor, and they may consult with other accountants, we are not aware that that has happened. Had that happened, we would be required to report that to you here tonight. There's other information presented in the annual comprehensive financial report that your team prepared. We don't audit that. We simply ensure that there's no deviations from the financial statements or anything that is blatantly different from the financial statements presented, but we're not required to perform audit procedures. Our procedures start at the basic financial statements into the supplementary information as well. That's all I had for you tonight, and I will say that it's very rare. It's not common for school districts to prepare their own annual comprehensive financial report. So kudos to your team again.
Thank you.
Do we have any questions from Sarah Sayers?
I'll just say that it's another of the things that I brag about as a super proud board member when I'm around other boards, is the way our finance team is good stewards of taxpayer monies and the way we responsibly and equitably spend our funding for our kids.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
And my apologies, Ms. Sarah Sayers began, and I saw everyone flipping through the books, but I think you found the PowerPoint presentation on page 205. My apologies for that. So what we'll go over now is the annual comprehensive financial report that's on page 15 of your binders. But I actually would like for you to begin with me on page 19 of your binders, which is a little eye of the financial report. And so I'll just look at your eyes to make sure that everyone's with me, if you found the page and we're all together before we start moving through it.
Yes.
Okay. So what I wanted to show here is the way the report is broken up. It is a comprehensive document, I'm sorry. Yes.
Our page numbers are a little different, it's page 19, guys.
Yes, page 19 of the entire book and little eye on the table of contents.
She said 13.
Okay. So it's me.
I'm the problem. We can continue.
Yes, ma'am, okay. So this is the table of contents. So I wanted to make sure that you all were aware of how the report is structured because I know it takes a little while to get through it, and there may be questions after tonight. And so if those questions arise, as always, we can go over those and discuss them more in detail. But I'll hit some of the most important, most critical pieces of the report. So in the table of contents, it's broken up into three major sections. And so the first section is the introductory section, that there's a letter of transmittal that talks about the economy in which Spring ISD operates, our largest taxpayer, those sorts of, that sort of information, and some comparisons between how our property values compared to the year before, that sort of, that sort of information. The second section is really the heart and meat of the financial report, and that's the financial section. And so the first item that you'll see, starting on page 15, is the Independent Auditor's Report that's spoken in detail to what you just heard our audit partner speak on just a moment ago. And then there's the management discussion and analysis. So that portion of the report is somewhat liftable. You can take that and just read it, and you would know everything that was happening throughout the financial statement. But it backs up and gives you the detail of all the numbers throughout the statement. And then the last section I wanted to bring your attention to is actually on page 20, and that's the statistical section. And so that portion of the financial report will give you a bit of a look back over the last 10 years in most cases of how the district has operated, top 10 taxpayers, the employers, major employers within the school district, that type of information. So again, the environment in which we're operating. What's very interesting is now we talk a lot about historical. Historical was always our methodology of figuring out what the future looks like. And now it's two years ago is not even historical anymore because we're in such a changing environment. And so, but it's always good to just go back and say, okay, where were we five years ago, 10 years ago? That's what the statistical section allows you to see, some of the trends and then some of the changes that we've seen as of late. So with that, I wanted to turn everyone's attention to page 59 of your binders. And so we're going to look at four of the financial statements. The first one here on page, it's page 59 of your binders, page 31 of the document, and it's the statement of net position. We have two different types of financial statements that we'll speak on tonight. The first is government-wide, and the other is the governmental financial statements. So this Exhibit A1 is the statement of net position. It's a government-wide financial statement, which means it's long-term items on there. And we tend not to speak on or use this financial report as something that we would make decisions on because it's long-term, it's items that we won't pay for many, many years into the future, such as bonds payable. Those sorts of items are listed here. And you heard our audit partner speak on the OPEB and the pension. So those are, that's TRS, which is the pension, and OPEB, the other post-employment benefit, is the TRS care. And so what we're having to do is book on our financial statements the district's proportionate share of the liability at the state level. Though it is relevant to Spring ISD and it's a part of Spring ISD, as you heard her mention earlier, we will never write a check for that in the future. So it's on our financial statements, but it's not something that's really a part of the district's daily operations. And that's what I mean when I say we don't typically make any type of operating decisions based on this statement. But to start off, just to make sure we understand what the numbers are on here. So the first section at the top of the page are the district's assets. And so you can see things you're used to seeing, cash, temporary investments. So that's things such as our tech pool investments that we have across the district. We see our capital assets, such as land, construction in progress, buildings, furniture and equipment, things of that nature. And then the last asset item is something that you heard mentioned as well a moment ago. And that's new that we see this year, and that's a result of GASB 87, which is now the right-to-use asset. So those are our leases that we're having to show them differently in our financial statements. So for the district, we have copiers, we have a print shop that has equipment. Those items that are leased, you'll see those here in that right-to-use leases. So the district's total assets are just over $1 billion. And then you see our deferred outflows and resources, which are related to primarily the pension and OPEB activities that we just spoke on. That's $73.2 million. Our total liabilities, which again, long-term liabilities, we've got accounts payable, but we've also, you'll see, due in more than one year, $683 million. So that's our bonds payable, that sort of thing, years, 20 years out with bonds payable. So total liabilities for the district, $946.7 million. Deferred inflows of resources, again, primarily related to pension and OPEB activities, $152 million. And the district's net position, which is the difference between those assets and deferred outflows versus the liabilities and deferred inflows, the net resulting position is that negative $7.6 million. And that is actually a bit of an increase from the previous year. And you heard her speak on just a moment ago, the change in the investments in the measurement year for that OPEB and the pension activities, which had an impact on the total amount that we're recording here. So that's the first, the first statement. The next statement is just on the next page, and that's the statement of activities. And so this, the way you read this report is you see our total government-wide expenditures by function. And so function is what function of the district is benefiting from these expenditures. So under governmental activities, if we're just reading from left to right, you see instruction. So we know instruction is going to be classroom-related instruction, which should always be, by and large, the district's largest expenditure item. And then you see all the other functional expenditures there, so total expenses. The way this report is set up is we see the total expenses, and then we see the revenues that offset those expenses. And that final column is the net expenses or revenues or change in net position. And so what it's showing you here is that the district does not operate in an environment where we're charging for services. So the expenditures we have are largely covered by the state aid and the property tax revenue that the district brings in. And so the reconciliation here is you see the government-wide expenditures, you see the charges for services, which are those items where we have a direct charge for the services that were provided. And I'll give you an example of that. You come about the second column, charges for services, about midway down the page. In general administration, you see the total expenditures, $25.2 million, but charges for services for that area was $4.4 million. That is the district's medical plan. So if you recall, we became self-funded for the first time during this fiscal year. And so this portion is the employee contributions to the medical plan. So the district contributes and employees contribute. So that's our charges for those services, that $4.4 million.
Ms. Westbrook, I'm sorry, can you say that part one more time?
About the $4.4. So we have a self-funded district plan where the district contributes, and then the employee contributes to pay the total cost of the medical plan. So the portion here that's listed under charges for services are the employees' contributions. So we charge them for the services provided through the medical plan. Okay, so that's the statement of activities, and you see at the bottom the net position ending, same as on the previous report.
Ms. Westbrook, what is the charges for services for child nutrition?
Students, when they pay for meals, food sales? And that's not, we have a lot of our campuses that are CEP, but we're still, they're still buying chips and ice cream and all those things outside of a train lunch, food sales. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so with that, we'll move over. If there are no additional questions, we'll move over to page 61, which is now our governmental funds. These are more short-term, and these are what I would consider our decision-making. You can really see where the district lands. So first, I wanted to show the funds that you see, which are considered our major funds, which is general fund, the debt service fund, ESSER 3, because of the amount of ESSER 3. And then the non-major governmental funds is a total of all of our special revenue funds, including child nutrition, our Title I funds, which we know support our at-risk students, IDEA B, which is federal funds that support our special ed students. So those are all the funds that are listed within the non-major, and there's many more. And they're listed in detail later in the book, but they're all added together here in that non-major governmental funds. So I want to start again, left to right, looking at the general fund. And we know general fund is the district's primary operating fund, and the one that we spend the vast majority of our time preparing and discussing. So here in general fund, you can see the total assets are $155.4 million. And just again, to speak on the short-term nature, if you just look kind of in the middle, under the receivables, you see due from governmental agencies of $24.6 million, just as an example. That's our state aid that's due to the district on June 30th, but it was received in July and August. So very shortly after the fiscal year ended. And liabilities, our total liabilities is $37.3 million. And again, just looking at our short-term liabilities, accrued salaries and expenditures, that's our salaries that were paid again in July and August, but they were for expenditures that were already incurred through June. So like our teachers, for example. So though our teachers get paid through August, on June 30th, that is how much we still owe them for the '21-'22 school year. So, but payable in the very short term in July and August. The total fund balance, which, so total fund balance for a general fund is $112.5 million. And what I'd like to just show here is the breakout of how the fund balance is reserved. And so the first two items you see are what's referred to as the non-spendable portion of fund balance. So inventory, we have inventory over in our distribution center. It's on the shelf, but it's not in a spendable form, right? So we'll use that later and expense it later. Prepaid items for our district, our large prepaid item is our property insurance because our property insurance renews on April 17. Because our property insurance renews on April first. So we're prepaying it for the next year. But for this fiscal year, only April, May and June were actually expensed. So we have that prepaid of three point five million. We still have our five billion committed for our strategic compensation plan. And then assigned is forty point, just under forty point eight million. The majority of that portion of the fund balance is reserved for, excuse me, assigned for um just ensuring that the district stays fiscally whole. And the other small portion is the seven hundred and ninety six thousand, which is for encumbrances. And that leaves us with fifty eight point one million um and unassigned. So we'll talk a little bit more about how we got to the fund balance and all of that in just a moment. With debt service, S R three and the non major funds, same methodology. You can see our total um total assets, total liabilities, and then the resulting fund balances. Just making sure it all sinks in. So on page sixty three. Is our statement of revenues and expenditures and changes in fund balance. So again, we look at the general fund and see our total revenues of three hundred and nineteen million. Local and intermediate sources is primarily made up of our property taxes. State, state program revenues is primarily our um state aid that we receive. And then federal program revenues is our SHARs, uh school health and related services. The reimbursement we receive for our Medicaid eligible expenditures and also indirect cost. So on on federal funds such as S R. The district is able to take a percentage of indirect costs to cover the district's administrative cost of running those those funds. So that's why this year we see that our federal program revenues, that eleven point one is a little higher than what we typically see. But it's because we have large amounts of federal funds that we're taking indirect costs on. Under expenditures, again broken down by functional areas, instruction, et cetera. So our total expenditures for the fiscal year are three hundred and five point six million. The difference in general fund in the total revenues and the total expenditures. We had revenues exceeded expenditures by thirteen point four million dollars. And so at first blush, you say, wow, that was great, we had a really, really great year financially. However, I want to make sure to bring some caution to that thought process. Because we are supplanting our general fund expenditures using our S R three dollars. So some of the costs that would normally be paid in general fund are over here in that third column in S R three. The other contributing factor to that is that we had a lot of vacancies in twenty one, twenty two. Teacher vacancies, bus driver vacancies, custodial vacancies, all of those are budgeted. But they're savings because those positions weren't filled. So that is, those are the two largest contributing factors to the fact that we had a surplus in general fund for the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. Then if we drop down to the other financing sources, there's three hundred and four uh thousand dollars. That's when we auction off property within the district and we we sell those property, that's what that is. And so that's anything from computers to from time to time, we sell the bus, that's what those proceeds would be. The other thing is you see that negative three point seven million. Three point seven one four of that amount is the district covering the overrun of the medical plan. So the self funded plan operated in a deficit in the first year of three point seven million. And so general fund had to cover that deficit. Um and so the net change in fund balance for general fund was nine point nine million. And that leaves us with the fund balance in general fund as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Of thirty, um excuse me, one hundred and twelve point five million. I jumped ahead to President Durant's question of what's the percentage? And it's thirty six point eight percent of our total expenditures.
I had a question about the the federal program revenues, you were mentioning the SHARs. Can you go into that a little bit more, eh explain?
Yes, that's a federal program where our special education students are coded. And there are services that we provide such as diagnostician services that are reimbursable. Through a federal program for our students who we have permission to provide those services to them. And so the district gets reimbursed for those expenditures. And so the total amount this year, I want to say all in all was maybe about five or six million dollars. Of that is for SHARs um reimbursement cost. And so that just goes back into the district's general fund to offset the total cost of the special education program.
Ms. Westbrook, as I understand it, uh we do not get uh reimbursement for our actual expenses for those programs.
No, ma'am, no, no, ma'am, we do not. Because in our overall special education funding is about twenty three million. But we typically spend closer to about thirty eight million on our special ed program. So about sixty percent is is funded um through state aid. And then you add the SHARs reimbursement and that offsets it a little bit more. But still definitely the district is paying more um of the total cost of the special ed services. Than what we're being reimbursed through the state, that's correct. Okay, so the next one is uh debt service. And of course, we've talked a lot about debt service over the last few months as we were preparing for our bond election. And so the debt service fund is to pay for the principal and interest on our long term debt associated with our our previous bonds. So the total revenue in that fund was sixty six point six million. The um vast majority, as you can see, almost all of the revenues that come into debt service fund come from property taxes. We receive a little bit of state aid, just a little over a million dollars um in state aid. Related to our debt service fund. And then under expenditures, we have the principal and the interest that are paid on those bonds. And then any associated bond issuance costs when we have transactions to refund. And as you know, anytime that interest rates allow us to, we take full advantage of refunding and calling those um those bonds in. And taking on any savings that we can, we can possibly get. So for the year, the. Revenues were under expenditures and debt service by six hundred thousand. But then you come down and you see that we had the two refundings in the twenty one, twenty two year. And so we refunded thirty five point five million in bonds. And we had a two point four million of um premium on those bonds. And then the payment to refunded escrow, so paying those bonds off was thirty seven point five. So then the net change is um four hundred and seventy two thousand dollars with the other financing sources. So offset that against the the deficit in revenue versus expenditures. And the net fund balance change for debt services just under um or just over a hundred thousand dollars. So our resulting fund balance at the end of the fiscal year was seventy three point one million. And as you know, we make our debt service payments in February and August every year. So this ends um June thirtieth. And then on August fifteenth, we made our uh debt service payment that's about forty million dollars. Okay, S R three is our next major fund. And so when we did the recovery plan for the district, we took our hundred and one million dollars of S R funds. And divided it by three and said, here are all the things that we're doing. And so we know the S R funds are supplanting general fund, number one. The campuses each received an S R F T E that they used in a very variety of ways. Um some created a new teacher position, some were using for behavior management, lots of different ways. And we also added interventionist position to our campuses as well. And then, of course, we know there's other items such as our cell curriculum and those sorts of things that we're using the S R funds for. So this is year one of our S R dollars. And so S R is a federal fund that is um paid back to the district on reimbursement. So general fund pays for the expenditures and then we get reimbursed. So that's why you'll always see revenues equal expenditures, because we get reimbursed as we expend the funds. So total revenue, thirty one point four million. And total expenditures of thirty one point four. And you can see of that thirty one point four, thirty point five are um instructional related expenditures. And it's pretty much all staffing, related to staffing.
You know, some, I'm just. The last time we had deficit budget budget was back in two thousand and eleven. When the state.
At the state level.
The state cut, yeah, they cut our funding. And our fund balance dropped to like nine percent.
Yes.
It was, it was rough. And to be at thirty six percent now, when i- is it, is it offset right now? Because, because of the S R funds, is that why we still?
Yes, it's it's twofold, it's the S R fund. Because we supplanted it with the indirect costs and the expenditures, we supplanted about eighteen million. To S R three. And we also had S R two funds that we were able to supplant as well, and that was three point nine million. And then we had vacancies. So all of those are contributing to the fact that we have a surplus in general fund. Without that supplanting, we would have, we would have had a deficit.
We would have a deficit, wouldn't we?
It would have been less than what we budgeted, but it was, it's definitely a deficit. And so I want to make sure to drive that point home as we begin our budget process. Yes, in in another year.
So if I understand this, book four, S R funding and vacancies, fund balance would be sitting at around eighty million dollars?
Um instead of having a surplus of about ten million, we would have had a deficit of about ten million.
We've got a lot of work to do uh on where we're, what we're gonna do when those S R funds are no longer available to us.
Yes. Okay, and then as I mentioned, the non major funds are funds, several funds that are added together. And all the details related to those funds actually begin on page ninety nine. And you can see them individually and see how they add together to become the non major fund. But those are the four financial statements that I wanted to bring your attention to. But as always, I definitely encourage you to spend some time reading through the financial statement. Even if it's skipping ten pages at a time, you'll still get a really, really good feel for the district's financial operations. And please make sure, um if there's questions that arise when you're just kind of going through it. Then we can always set up office hours and be able to answer those questions specifically for you all. Um to just make sure that we have a really good in depth understanding of how we're operating financially. And then how that transitions into our budget preparation for the next year.
I don't think people realize how um complicated school finance is. It's not an easy, and I just process this, I really am extremely grateful uh for Ms. Westbrook and her team. Uh they do such an amazing job. And even the way you explain it, it makes it digestible for us, you know, kind of.
Thank you. Team is heavily underscored because it it does take an entire team. I know uh our director of accounting, Lila Murray's here tonight. Yes.
Thank you.
She she's the first parent of this document, and then I get to take on and adopt it a little later in the process. So it it's definitely a team effort, so thank you for that.
And I will say, we have a few fairly new board members. And when I first got on the board, I just would just schedule some time with Ms. Westbrook. And she's always made herself available and has been very helpful.
Ms. Westbrook, uh this is a public document.
Yes, ma'am.
And anybody can access them and look at ours finances. I just want to make that point that, because I know we're talking about a lot of things that people can't read while we're doing it. But uh this is all available, and I assume it's on our website.
Yes, ma'am, it's on our springisd.org backslash financial transparency website. And not only is this report on there, but all of our financial reports are on there for at least the last three years. Yes, ma'am, thank you for that.
Ms. Westbrook, are we required by law to post that on the base, on our website?
And I know um this report is my favorite report, but your favorite report, the popular annual financial report, will come in December. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Give everybody a minute. All right, thank you, Ms. Westbrook. Then I will now entertain a motion.
You ready for the motion?
Yes.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ended June thirtieth to twenty twenty two. And the independent auditors report.
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Hodges and seconded by Trustee Adams. That the Board of Trustees approved the annual compensation financial report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And the independent auditor's report. Is there any discussion?
You said annual compensation, might correct that, annual comprehensive.
Thank you. Annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty two, and independent auditor's report. Not hearing any discussion, all those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. Our next item is the board committee reports, and I'd like to first start with our audit committee.
Madam President, we have not met at this time, so I don't have any information for us.
Thank you. Our next uh committee update is our board governance committee, Dr. Jensen.
Uh we met and uh we discussed uh uh some of the policies that we discussed in the last work session. And uh that are bringing forward tonight for a um if they're on the consent agenda for approval. Uh we also uh discussed the um governance that we need to be concerned with in our uh safety plan. And found out that the entire board uh did not have to be as concerned as the people, the trustees who are actually on that committee. And um President Durant, I I understand you're one of the trustees on that safety committee.
Yes.
Is is there another trustee?
Yes, Trustee Hodges.
Okay.
And Trustee Newhouse, there's three of us.
Oh, well, thank you, all three of you. We um are uh looking at um the voting records of certain um legislators at this point. And uh seeing uh if we can develop relationships uh in the future. With uh giving them facts as we see them and information that we think that they need to make their decisions for what they're going to support not. Uh and we are have a treat tonight because we have trustee Natasha Daniels. Who is uh going to tell us about her experience at the Tasby Conference. And the uh development of the Tasby legislative priorities, which we may want to uh adapt, adopt as our own or may not. I handed it to you.
Thank you, trustee Jensen. Um yes, so I had the opportunity to represent Spring ISD at the delegate assembly this past September. Um very lively discussion there. Um but I do want to bring the um advocacy agenda priorities that were um voted on or adopted, I should say. From um from that that meeting, so there were actually eleven. So I'll share them, give a little, some descriptors, and then we can, you know, maybe discuss further. Um first was the teacher recruitment and retention. So we know that that is. So we know that that is, um, top of mind. Um, Tasby is calling upon the Texas State Legislature to provide additional state funding, um, to help elevate the teaching profession. And providing more substantial financial aid and other programs to incentivize teachers to come into the field. For one, um, increasing educator and staff compensation, which is something, you know, we've been working on here in spring as well. Um, but just getting more support from the state with that, um, and then improving staff health and retirement benefits. As well as we talk about those unfunded mandates, getting more support with the burden that that puts on the district. So teacher recruitment and retention was first off, um, student and staff mental health. We talk a lot about S E L for students and staff as well. I mean, so Tasby is calling on the legislator to improve access to, uh, mental health services and mental health professionals. Um, either within a district or a collaborative network with the district. To solve student health, mental health issues and then support teachers as well in that area. Number three is vouchers. And so we know, um, what I should say, Tasby is calling on the legislator to prevent, um, any transfer of public funds using vouchers. So we know that when vouchers are utilized, that money is, um, transferred from public schools. Um, and so in addition to that, education savings accounts, um, corporate tax credits to private schools and individuals. And then the expansion of virtual instruction by corporation. So vouchers was, is, I should say, a top issue. Something else and trustee Correa, we were in the session, um, with Raise Your Hand Texas. And, um, that aligns with the state accountability. So every, I believe it's five years, um, the accountability system is revised. And so that's coming forth, um, here soon. And so Tasby is calling for an expansion of the accountability frameworks. So currently, when it comes to elementary and middle schools, one hundred percent of the weight, um, for accountability in the student achievement domain is on STAR. And so the call is to widen the indicators. Widen the net in terms of what actually constitutes school quality and performance beyond just the high stakes assessment. And so I'm gonna share that report is from Raise Your Hand Texas. It's called Measure What Matters. And Raise Your Hand Texas actually did a, um, from October twenty twenty-one to May twenty twenty-two. They reached out to over fifteen thousand families. Pa- um, parents, students were involved as well, teachers, principals to gain input as to what we in the community would like to see to, um, expand our accountability system. And so just to share some of those findings, key findings, were that, um, equally important to measure the impact of student learning, um, measuring programming like fine arts. Um, extracurricular offerings, dual language programs, um, and then student safety and teacher quality. So looking beyond just the STAR test is, um, a part of that state accountability that, um, we're looking or that Tasby is, is calling upon the legislator to expand. Um, and then moving on to school finance, so um, updating the school finance system and the basic allotment using student enrollment. I know we talked about that a lot, um, and so that's one area. School facilities. Look, you know, we're so excited that we just passed our bond, um. But that's one area that we know, um, Tasby is calling on the legislator to recognize the disparities in property values. Um, and adequately fund and update the state's current facilities program. Next was violent language honesty, restoring local patrol, um, parental partnerships. So encouraging productive engagement between families and, um, the schools. And then charter schools was a major one. So Tasby is calling upon the state legislator to restrict the expansion of charter schools. And reduce the impact that that's having. We know there's, that's an issue statewide. Um, and then lastly, it's just preventing community, um, censorship. So those are the eleven, um, advocacy priorities, um, that can, as we said, kind of give us a springboard for where we want to head for our spring ISD advocacy priorities that are even more targeted to our community. Thank you. Any comments or question, discussion, any discussion?
Well, in the past, this has been an iterative process that we bring this forward, get you thinking about it. Because we can come up with our local priorities. We don't, we're not stuck with theirs. But, um, I can tell you that I was sitting there as you were reading and I was, you know, getting revved up about some of those issues. Uh, especially since the state of Texas is projected to have a twenty-seven billion dollar surplus this year. And, um, I think some of these things that are desperately needed for Texas school children and their teachers are, should be addressed. So, uh, and we'll just, uh, each month, we'll bring forward some, uh, priorities and have you start making decisions about what you want to do, okay?
I'd like to thank trustee McDaniels and trustee Jensen, as well as trustee Adams, who all serve on our governance committee. Fine, fantastic job, great, uh, update. Those are the Texas Association of School Board, Tasby. Eleven priorities for the state. And then we will, as a body, take a look at which ones impact us here in Spring ISD the most. And what are the ones that we would like to drive forward? And then we'll adopt those and then we'll get busy about making sure that our voices are heard, uh, with our legislators. Um, I do know that, um, trustee Correa on the board is interested in putting together a coalition with some of our neighboring districts, um, because they're strengthened numbers. And so as we approach our legislators to, to drive forth, um, our legislative priorities that support the students here in Spring ISD. As elected officials, we will continue to stay focused on that work and make sure that your voice is heard uh, for what's best for us and our kids here in Spring ISD. So thank you so very much for that report. And next we will have an update from our. I lost my place. Equity, Equity Committee. Uh, our equity chair is trustee Adams. And I'll turn it over to trustee Adams. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Madam President. We were able to meet, although not quite at full strength. Um, this, the, this past, was it Tuesday, Dr. Nelson? Monday, okay. Um, and so, um, having gone through, uh, it was right after we had done our first budget review. We got that from the workshop. And so what we've been wanting to focus on is making sure as we go through the budget process. Uh, continuing to look at what we do through an equity lens. And so trustee McDaniels attended a webinar, um, that was presented by the Edgenomics Lab at Georgetown University. And it turns out that, um, the administration has been on sort of a parallel professional development track. Um, because there were resources from E R S. And I'm not right now able to call what that acronym stands for. Anybody? E R S?
Education Resource Strategies.
Okay. Yeah, um, so they're doing some of the same training along with Holes Work and other professional development they're doing that Natasha and I are doing through school board partners in the Edgenomics Lab at Georgetown University. And so there are some tools that I'll be sharing with the board. Actually, Natasha, did you already share out the scatter plot and the other tools? Okay, so yeah, we'll be sharing out these tools that allow us an, uh, an ability to look at our, our spending in some slightly different ways. It might reveal some surprises about what we're doing. There are some deep dive questions, uh, and Natasha shared this with me. That, uh, the Edgenomics Labs recommends you ask. And as we approach this S R, S R cliff, we'll need to take into consideration. So I'll read off three of the, uh, deep dive questions. One of them is, what is the strategy for how schools get what they get? And we talked about that in the meeting, how the funding formula for our schools sometime, it's, it's an equal, not necessarily an equitable a formula and so ways that we can work around that. Second question is, how could we restructure spending based on outcomes? Um, and thirdly, uh, how can we learn from schools with higher performance? And this is just questions that we should be asking ourselves as we make decisions about how much funding schools get, where we prioritize that funding. And so we'll be going through those discussions when we get our full team back together on Equity Committee. And we'll be sharing out the resources that we're looking at with the entire board. So you can see sort of where our heads at before we start coming up with any recommendations. Did I leave anything out? Any of your Equity Committee members? Thank you.
And your committee members are?
That would be, uh, Natasha McDaniel, Carmen Correa, Ms. Ann Westbrook's, Jeremy Binkley, Julie Hill, and Superintendent Hinoza.
Thank you. Great job. And I know that the, um, administration has also been, um, I know you all recently attended a session. I don't know if you wanted to mention that.
Yes, as, um, Mr. Adams said, we actually just got back today at noon. Um, as you may remember, we are part of the system of great schools. And our North Star goal is how, um, we will make sure that all of our schools are A and B campuses and that, uh, we increase the number of students in A and B campuses. Well, part of that deep dive is looking at how funding is allocated. And the questions that Mr. Adams just shared is the same type of work that we did yesterday. Um, we had the opportunity, Ms. Westbrook's as our CFO, uh, Dr. Parisaw as our chief of innovation and myself attended, uh, what we call a learning lab. And we were in Seguin, um, all day yesterday and half a day today. And, you know, really looking at how funding is allocated. And, uh, they were able to, you know, take our own expenditures and our own enrollment and do some of the, you know, the what ifs. And so we're going through that learning process, just like, um, Mr. Adams and Ms. McDaniel are doing at the national level. And hopefully be able to come back together to look at what models, um, we may, uh, be able to consider.
Thank you. Fantastic. Uh, any, any questions for the equity? I'm gonna now turn it over to trustee Kelly P. Hodges, who chairs our, uh, board community engagement committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, our committee did not meet, however, we have been working and, um.
Okay, good afternoon, good evening. Uh, thank you, Madam President. Our committee has, we did not have an opportunity to meet. I believe our meeting fell on the, uh, same day as the, um, golf tournament for the foundation. So we did not meet in the month of, um, what month is this? This is November.
Didn't mean October.
Yeah, it's been a long, it's been a long year. Okay. So let me put my readers on. I do have a report, however. We are continuing to support the spring community. Last Saturday, we hosted a community outreach day and volunteered at NAMM. Uh, staff, students, parents and community members donated hours of their time and talents by working in various duties, uh, at NAMM. And as you know, uh, NAMM has great need, uh, currently for, uh, food, um, supplies and canned goods and things like that, non-perishable items. So, uh, thank you all for attending and, uh, supporting the Northwest Assistance Ministries. Um, and it was really a wonderful way to show our civic responsibility and to let our partners know that they have our full support. Because as you know, we, uh, actually, I believe we, did we honor NAMM this year already? Yeah, as one of our community partners. So it was good that we were able to come out and support them. We're also partnering with Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the Omicron Tau Omega Chapter, which serves the spring Texas. Uh, they are hosting a food drive for our families in spring. We're actually adopting fifty families and providing them with Thanksgiving meals. So we're excited about that partnership. Uh, and as you know, on the board, we have, um, several members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, the spring chapter, Omicron Tau Omega, myself. Um, Justine, our president, Justine Durant, trustee Durant, and trustee Rhonda Newhouse. And then also, um, on the leadership team, uh, Ms. Ann Westbrooks is also a part of our chapter. So we're very excited to be able to continue to support, uh, the school district and, uh, supporting our families. And also we invite everyone to attend our Veterans Day breakfast tomorrow at seven thirty A M. at Planet Ford Stadium. Looks like I'll be there as well. They're laughing because I was so excited about it being a holiday for me and being able to sleep in. But I'll be there, so I encourage you all to come. Uh, we'll be at Planet Ford Stadium and where we will honor veterans in the spring community. Uh, that breakfast is from seven thirty to nine and no registration is required. So if you know a veteran, uh, but we would love to come, have them come out, uh, he, he or she to come out and so that we can celebrate, uh, with them. So thank you so much. Any questions regarding, uh, what we're doing, uh, with our committee?
Trustee Hodges, I do have a comment.
Yes.
I will be attending that breakfast with my very favorite veteran, my husband, Ed Jensen.
All right, well, well, I'll see you in the morning. And I want to thank, uh, all of my committee members. And of course, I can't remember them all, but I do want to send a special shout out to, uh, Ms. Trinida Carroll, who keeps me on point. And I honestly truly appreciate it because we're all pulled. As you know, we volunteer. Uh, and, and she often, I'm often voluntold by, um, Ms. Trinida Carroll. So, uh, thank you for your support and, uh, lending a hand to the committee. Is the resource fair this Saturday? Are we having a resource fair this Saturday, Ms. Carroll?
Yes. Come on up. We can't hear you.
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, trustee. I don't have that on my calendar.
Trustee Correa is on that committee with trustee Hodges and myself.
Let me see. What time is this fair? Go ahead.
And Ms. Townsend is on that committee as well.
Let me see.
Good evening. We are having our annual community resource fair this Saturday at Westfield High School. And so what we're doing on Saturday is we have invited our community agencies who represent, um, medical field, um, career resources for, for families who may be looking for jobs. Any kind of veterans assistance, housing, uh, NAMM, of course, will be there. We want all of our families to participate, to know what resources are available to them right here in our community. And so Westfield will open their doors to all of our agencies and our families. Our goal is to connect our families with resources that, that they may need.
Thank you. And if you all recall, we talked about this early on, um, I think probably in, in July, maybe August, when we were planning our calendar. So this is a big deal. So I'll see you all tomorrow morning and Saturday morning.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Our next item is the consent agenda. And I'll now entertain a motion to approve and adopt all of the items listed on tonight's consent agenda.
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by trustee Correa and seconded by trustee Hodges. That the Board of Trustees approve and adopt all of the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Not hearing any? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. The Board of Trustees will now recess this open session and convene in a closed meeting in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, section five five one dot zero seven one, five five one dot zero seven two, five five one dot zero seven four, five five one dot zero seven six, and five five one dot zero eight two one. Now, voting will take place in the closed session. Any action the board wishes to take as a result of the discussion in the closed meeting will take place after the board reconvenes in open session. Time is now eight fifty-four P M. We will now reconvene and resume the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and the time is now ten fifteen P M. We will now address, now address the items discussed during closed session. Are there any motions?
Here. Oh, Madam President, I, I move that we convene. Adjourn the meeting. Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, adjourn.
You have a second? Second. It's been moved by trustee Hodges and seconded by trustee McDaniels that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. That motion carries unanimously. The meeting adjourned this evening at ten sixteen P M. Thank you, guys.